Good afternoon, everyone. This is Mike Newmark, Administrative Law Judge for the PSC. Just me chatting to the Zoom people right now. So just sit tight for a second, everybody in the room. Just wanted to check in with everyone. We're here for the Dawn Harvest Solar Project Public Hearing Session. Yeah, I'm seeing some heads nodding. Okay, good. We're in the right place. My name is Michael Newmark, Administrative Law Judge for the PSC. Just want to check people in. We're going to be taking public comment at this session. And I want to just make sure we can, everyone can hear me. It looks like people can hear me. Is that, is that right? Everyone? Okay, great. And, and so what we'll do is we'll do a brief introduction. We'll wait till two first, make sure we get everyone involved here. We'll do a brief introduction and then we'll have people giving their comments. We'll kind of split this up between people in the room and people on Zoom. I'm going to just go through the hearing process and I'm going to take that screen, that screen share off so we can see each other a little better. So let's just sit tight for another few minutes and we'll get started at two. Thanks. It got really quiet all of a sudden. Well, while we're waiting, so this doesn't really pertain to the Zoom people. For people in the room, if you do want to comment, can you guys hear me okay? The ghosts are here. Uh oh, the ghosts heard me. Okay. If you do want to make a comment, you just want to fill out one of these appearance slips. And, you know, fill out top your name and stuff and then check the speak now box. And once you do that, you can give this slip back to commission staff out at the table. They'll get me the slip and then once I have it, I'll be able to call your name out. And once I do that, we'll have you come up and give your comment. So first, first things first is fill out the form. That's the first step. So just to show hands, who wants to speak today? People want to give us a comment?
Is the comment online only till the 23rd?
No, we'll get into that. We'll get into that. Don't worry. Yeah, we had a little goof up there, but yeah. But yeah, if you do want to speak today, this is the time. It'd be no speaking and making your comment live. This is the time to do that. Alright, so. Person came in. Oh yeah, that's a special camera. So we're on Zoom and we're live streaming as well. So we've got all the connections going. And that's the thing that gives us a, kind of gives us a view of the entire room at once. Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, I can't, yeah, I can move over a little bit. Okay, there you go. Yeah. You're good? These were just blank. Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure if we're getting comments. Strange because I'm using their microphone, not mine. So it's really confusing. Looks like I'm muted.
Oh.
Yeah. It's just this little speaker over here. I don't know. Yeah, who knew? Got to get one of those. Yeah, it's been about two, about a year we've been in person for the public sessions. Yeah, but most of the party sessions we've done on Zoom. The only ones we did in person, well, did in the hearing room, people were really upset, like, why did we come here? So much easier on Zoom. But yeah, well, I think when, when, when there's really big hearings, we'll do those in the hearing room. There's a couple of big cases coming up, so. Those will be, yeah, you know, I keep forgetting. I got to connect all the, yeah, you'll, you'll see that. Yeah. Yeah. I know. Yeah, I know. There's a lot of benefits. Not really. But for the, for us, you mean with us? Yeah, yeah. 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 And then you were the person, right? Okay, well, some people are still joining us, so we're just going to let them check in. Now they're coming. Okay. Obviously have a good crowd here. All right, well, let's get started. We can start off the record. Just want to welcome everyone. This is docket 9809 CE100, the application for a CP CN of Dawn Harvest Solar. My name is Michael Newmark, the Administrative Law Judge for the PSC. And what we're doing here today is collecting public comments in the case. We, last week, we heard from the parties and commission staff. We took their evidence. And, and their witnesses were subject to questioning. But at this point, we're here to hear from the public, people in the area affected or really just anybody except for the parties we'll hear from today. And what we're looking here today is to get your opinion on the case. Just collecting your comments based on what you know. And what we do, our normal process is we take those comments, we provide those to the commissioners, the three people in our agency that make the decision on the application. And they have the power to accept the application, modify the application, or reject the application. So that's what we did. So what we do is we take those comments along with the other documentation we've collected during the party process and we provide that to the commissioners. So so this process, we have, like I mentioned before, in order for you to make a comment, there's really three options you can do today, which is first of all, if you're in the hearing room, you'll want to fill out an appearance slip. And fill out your name and then select that if you want to speak today, you'll check the yes, speak now, yes, check that. You can also just hand this form in with your comment written on it. And you can use a few more pages if you'd like. Or you can fill out your comment online. And there's details on how to do that on this form and also on our notice of hearing. Did want to mention though, that the original date, the original due date for written comments was January 23rd. We've extended that to February 14th. So just so you know, this form was printed with the old date. But we, and the notice of hearing also has the old date, but new date is February 20, February 14th. And we sent out a notice to the landowner list indicating that extension of time. So I'm pretty sure we covered everyone who, you know, really would be interested in making a comment, but I want to make sure we just state this publicly that we are extending the comment period. And we're, we're live streaming this and there's going to be a recording of this hearing on our YouTube channel. So still some other places you can refer back to, to get the correct date. So you can mail us a comment by us mail or go to our website. The link on that is, is right on the form. It's also on our notice of hearing. Let me show that for the people online. It's on the second page here. So, so you got the link and the QR code for that. So so I'm going to stop the screen sharing now. That'll give us a little better view of everyone. And so our basic process for taking a comment in person at the hearing room is once I get your appearance slip, I'll call out your name and have you come up, kind of a different setup than we usually have, but I'll have you come up around back and sit in this chair here. I'll swear you in. I'll just get your name and you can give us your comment. So the base, the process is pretty simple. The important thing to remember is we're transcribing what you say. We have our court reporter here. And she just needs you to speak slowly and clearly so that she can capture all your words. The other ground rule is please don't interrupt from the audience, no cheering or booing or any kind of other interruptions. Basically, we just want to get your comment in and we hopefully be respectful for everyone's opinion. And the commissioners will read this comment. So this is your chance to speak to the commission. I want to give everyone the same chance to do that. For people online, like, like I mentioned before, I'll be calling out your name too. Again, swearing you in and having you give your comment. Just tell us what you think about the project. The court, court reporter will be listening to you, so you'll get your comment in the transcript of the case as well. And like I mentioned, there will be a recording of this hearing. It will be an unofficial version of the hearing, but it'll be available for public convenience to review on our YouTube channel. So I think that's all we need to cover at this point. I don't have any appearance slips for the people in, in attendance here in the hearing room. So other, is there anyone who did want to make a comment here in person? Yes. Okay. And you got your slip there. Okay. Great. And
Did you want to make a comment?
No.
You're going to do it. Okay.
Okay. So we have Bernie Brown. I'll call you. Have you come up? Brienne. Okay. Yeah, I'm going to mess those names up, even the ones that I shouldn't mess up because they're very simple and easy to read. But I'll do that. Come right up to this chair. Go. See, I'll swear you in. Raise your right hand. You swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. So speaking to the mic, give us your name, please.
Brienne Brown. I am curious with a lot of the comments I've seen. A lot of people are considered about the, concerned about the environmental cost and the actual cost of decommissioning of solar projects 20, 25 years from now. Does the PSC require any bonding or does the state require any bonding to be put into the leases? So that there is proactive investment in making sure that when panels are decommissioned, they are decommissioned properly and there's enough money for it.
Okay. Yeah. So we don't, we're not, it's not really a question answer. We're just getting your comment, your opinion. So you're concerned about that. I understand. So that's what we wanted the commission to know. But in terms of requirements for bonding, I don't believe there's anything required for that. But the application will review what, what they're proposing in terms of decommissioning, decommissioning plan. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, thanks. Anyone else in the room that wanted to speak? Okay. Well, we got a lot of people on Zoom. There is pretty cold out there, so might have scared some people away with the weather, but so let's see. Unfortunately, I do not know who checked in Zoom first, so I'm just going to go through the list that I have right now, which is basically alphabetical. My first name. So we have Albert Turkington IV. Did you want to make a comment? You'll just have to unmute.
I do, yes.
Okay, great. So you've seen the drill here. I'm going to swear you in and have you give a comment. So raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, it's a little bit tricky to hear you.
I do.
Yes. Okay. This is go off the record for a second. So first of all, would you mind turning your, your background off? Want to be able to see?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Yeah, blurred is okay. I just don't want something, you know, displaying a sign or whatever.
Oh, of course.
And yeah, if we can just adjust your mic a little bit, you're just not coming in very clear.
Is this better?
It's a little bit. Is that, can you hear Debbie? You can? Oh, okay. Maybe it's just me. Okay. Couple of breaks. All right. So we swear to, swear you in. So please give us your name and comment, please.
Sure. My name is Albert Turkington. I'm with Wisconsin Conservative Energy Forum. The Wisconsin Conservative Energy Forum is an organization of conservative leaders across Wisconsin who care about applying conservative market-based solutions to energy issues facing our state. Energy markets around the country are undergoing a large-scale transition to renewable sources of power. And we believe that the Dawn Harvest Solar Project represents another critical step in this transition for Wisconsin. The 150 megawatt solar facility offers another glimpse at the promising future of energy generation in our state. The, the economic benefits in the area stand to be tremendous. Land lease and purchase payments to local farmers.
Just a second here. Can you just break up? Yeah, we're kind of, you're kind of breaking up a bit.
Oh, so sorry.
I think there's sort of an echo. I don't know if it's on your side. Is there, is there a speaker close by, but maybe not right by you? Because it's
Yes, yeah. I don't have like a specific mic. I do apologize.
Yeah. Getting some sort of feedback. Yeah, I don't know. We have sort of a Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's, let's, let's just give us a test, a couple of words. Albert.
I'm sure. Testing, testing, one, two, three, four.
Okay, that sounds better. All right. Sorry about that. It looks like you're reading from something. So you did want to just file that, that might be as a backup, maybe that would be a good idea if you want to file your comment. But you want to back up to where you are and continue?
Sure. I'll just back up a few sentences here.
Debbie, did you need her to? I don't know if she can hear you. I think you need to speak.
The 150 megawatt solar facilities, that sentence?
Absolutely. The 150 megawatt solar facility offers another glimpse at the promising future of energy generation in our state. The economic benefits in the area stand to be tremendous. Land lease and purchase payments to local farmers diversify rural income streams and help keep farmers on their land. These payments also recognize farmers' rights as property owners and support their choices about how to be good stewards of their land while contributing to the development of their communities. The Dawn Harvest Solar Project is estimated to generate $96 million in combined annual shared revenue for Rock County. Significant job creation associated with construction, increased tax revenue for local governments, and significant land lease on purchase payments to rural landowners are all part of the promise of an increasingly cost-effective renewable energy future and signal a project that is beneficial for our state. Communities, local businesses, and farmers are strengthened as they pursue more varied sources of energy. The potential job growth, tax benefits, local economic impact, and increased revenues to the local landowners and farmers that are part of this project will give the Wisconsin, give the Wisconsin Conservative Energy Forum great reason to support it. We urge the Public Service Commission to vote to approve docket number 9809 CE100. Application for a certificate of public convenience and necessity of Dawn Harvest Solar. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Just going to go off the record for a sec. Thinking maybe I'll switch to this speaker instead. I don't know if that's going to work very easily or I think you probably need to turn that one off and then Has Hello? Okay. So can people hear me now on Zoom? Okay. So I think the only problem is we don't have a mic for this speaker. And so Albert, just give us another test of your, your audio, please.
Sure. Testing and testing, one, two, three, four.
That's now let's hang on. Let me think about this.
Is there
Yeah. Doesn't sound like it's going through at all. They are, yes, I do. You're right. Okay. Yeah. Okay. One more time, Albert. Another test. I'm going to unmute you.
I'm shutting. Testing, testing.
Okay. Yes. Okay. We're almost there. We're almost there. Oh, now we should be good. One more time.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
All right. So thanks. I think that should do it. Not sure. People are going to be able to hear that, but turn it up. Okay, so let's, let's switch to the next person. It's like, so I am taking people alphabetically. Gary Kraus, you did have your hand up. So let's just check in with you while we're, before we get started.
Testing, testing. Do you hear me?
Can people hear Gary in the back? Because we're not, we're not mic'd up here now. So we're going to be taking people alphabetically. I guess you are next alphabetically now. You joined us late, but that's okay. So did you want to make a comment, Gary?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. My name's Gary Kraus. I live over at 3858.
Hang on, hang on. You missed sort of the intro, but I'm going to I'm going to swear you in first and then have you comment. So you realize we're in the Dawn Harvest Solar Project Public Hearing, right?
Correct.
Yeah, good. Got to make sure you're in the right place. All right. So raise your right hand and do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Can you get your camera on?
Yeah, I thought I had it on. It's about, there we go.
There we go. Perfect. All right. Great. Okay, so got you there. Okay, great. Excellent. All right. So we swear you in. Give us your name and your comment, please.
Yeah, my name's Gary Kraus. I live over on the northeast edge of Janesville. And I am actually participating to voice opposition to the project for a number of reasons. One is I just was hiking over in the Clinton area and I did a cut through over towards Delavan and passed that large ongoing forever solar array. And it's it's really a visual blight, a sight corridor blight to look at. This is up near, in my opinion, the edge of Janesville where potential future residential expansion type development could occur. And, and it's not going to be the most attractive thing to the surface of the earth. In addition to that, I have concerns about the impact of solar arrays around the globe and different studies on airflow, temperature, weather and the impacts that, this is one of the larger ones to my understanding from what I see in the region. And based on the one that I drove by at Clinton, it just is a negative distractor to the area. And so those are my objections as a resume to the area that, you know, and I'm not a NIMBY type person, not in my backyard. But these things are just unattractive. I've seen some on the interstate driving up towards Eau Claire and up towards Duluth, Minnesota. And, and it's just I don't think this is a good location for this for a broad range of reasons. So I wanted to go on comment officially on that.
All right. Great. I appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, so Gary, I'm just going to check your name here that you made a comment. And we'll continue with Joan Shadel, S H A D L. Did you want to comment? Okay, see you there. Sorry about that. Technical distraction again. Okay. So let's, we'll unmute you. I think I can do that from here. There we go. Great. So let me swear you in. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. Give us your name and comment.
Joanne Shadel. I grew up on double M's. I am also like Gary Kraus, not in favor of this. Couple of comments. The cost of decommissioning. That's vital and is it going to be in escrow? Also, this solar field is projected to go on Rock Prairie, which is some of the, or is the best land in the world. And I am saying world. And we're going to take that out of food production. And I don't think that's a good use of the land to put it in solar panels. So far, some of the opinions that Albert had were all based on money and not everything is money. Again, the property values, I believe, are going to fall in the area. There, you know, the landscape is going to change dramatically for the people that are still living in that area. I have heard from others that are around the Delavan Darien Solar Field that although they were, were told that there would be no noise, there is a lady that lives right next to the field and she constantly hears the noise of the panels moving or whatever. I would say that if this is not denied, it should be at least postponed until we can determine what the effects of the Darien solar field are going to have on the neighbors that will continue to live in that area. What kind of property value declines we see? And just, you know, what it's going to affect the neighbors. It's also like Gary said. Just looking at them, our beautiful landscape is gone. And there's more, we need to preserve our landscape. We only have so much earth. So anyway, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Joseph Kennedy. Did you wish to comment? Okay. I don't know if you can hear me, but we will move on, on down the list, but we'll, we'll definitely give you another chance before we break up here. Kaden Crap. Like the comments. See you there. All right. So I'll unmute you. Swear you in, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Name and comment.
Just to check, you can hear me all right?
Yes.
All righty. So yes, my name is Kaden Crap. I will also be speaking on behalf of the Wisconsin Conservative Energy Forum. And when it comes to the Dawn Harvest Solar Project, it is estimated to generate $96 million in combined annual shared revenue for Rock County. And then also that the 90% cost And then also that the ninety percent cost, cost decline of solar energy within the last decade is helping put this technology in a position it has never been before, among the lowest cost options available. In Wisconsin, we've always relied on sources of energy from outside the state, spending fifteen billion last year in importing oil, natural gas, and coal, and creating hundreds of thousands of jobs elsewhere. Now driven by market demand and improving economics, we are seeing collaborations to harness an energy resource we have right here in the state. Being local landowners to generate energy from the sun and improving environmental outcomes while we do it. And this is why we urge the Public Commission, Public Service Commission, excuse me, vote to approve docket number nine eight oh nine dash CE dash one hundred. Application for certificate of public convenience and necessity of Don Harvest Solar. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your comment. C, C R A P P.
Thank you.
You know, I'll take a picture of the people online right now.
Should I smile pretty for that, Judge?
Uh, no, not your picture, your, your names, picture of your names, so no, no great mug shots for anyone. Okay, all right, so let's move on, Kathleen, Catherine Q, Catherine Q. Did you want to make a comment? C U E, yeah?
No, thank you.
Nothing, okay. Neil Johnson. All right, we'll check back later, Peter Caesar.
Thank you, but no, no comments.
Comment, okay, Sheila Williams. Oh. Z O N I N. Donin. No, can we just, someone had called us but just dropped off, so. All right, so we'll just ask one more time, does anyone, anyone else online that has not had a chance to speak wish to make a comment? And anyone in the room wish to make a comment? Nobody? All right, well, so just spend a few more minutes online before we adjourn, just want to give people a chance to change your mind. If you do wish to speak, fill out the appearance slip, get it to me. Remember, there's written comments are still available, the opportunity to do that is still available, ah, here we go. One more person. Okay, so someone dropped out. All right, we have some people have joined us for the public hearing in the Don Harvest Solar CPCN project application, this is Mike Newmark, Ministry of Law Judge for the PSC. Looks like we had two people just join us, and we are taking public comments now, so if you do wish to speak, we'll start with Sheila Williams, did you want to make a comment?
Uh, no, thank you, I'm just here to observe, but I will be submitting my comments online, thank you.
All right, thanks. And it looks like Luz Gonzalez, Gonzalez also want, just joined us. Any comment from you?
No comment, I'm also here to observe.
Okay, thanks, well, we are out of people to make a comment, so we actually are gonna adjourn in a few minutes here, or seconds, probably. But I want to remind people, yes, the written comment period is available still. It'll be open until February fourteenth, don't forget, the paperwork you may have received indicated January twenty-third for the comment deadline, but we've extended that to February fourteenth. Also, we'll be back here at six PM at Town of Harmony Town Hall and on Zoom, so you can see us there and make a comment at that time. Otherwise, one last chance, anybody? Nothing for now. All right, so we're gonna adjourn, and we'll be back at six PM, thanks very much.
Thank you.